I'd like to call to order the meeting of the City of Falls Church City Council on Monday, March 11, 2013. If you please rise and pledge allegiance with me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome, the public who are viewing on television and via web and also in person. And a special shout out to our Boy Scout troop who's here as well. So I imagine that they're going for their merit badge for civics, probably, if I'm not mistaken. So if you have any questions during the public comment period, we did that last time, we'll be happy to take any of the scouts' questions if they have any at that point. So, welcome. Mr. Schaff, you read the roll, please.
Ms. Berry.
Here.
Mr. Duncan.
Here.
Mr. Kaylin.
Here.
Mr. Pepe.
Here.
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Charter.
Here.
Mayor Bruck.
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Council, and we also had an amended agenda that added a closed session at the end, and that was the only change. If I can get a motion to adopt the meeting agenda, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the amended meeting agenda.
If I can get a second?
Second.
Mr. Kaylin, on the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, the meeting agenda is adopted. And we have a proclamation. I've asked Ms. Berry to read that proclamation since she is our go-to person on environmental matters.
Whereas, the City of Falls Church has assumed a leadership role through its climate protection initiative and the work of the Environmental Services Council and its Energy Efficiency and Climate Change Task Force Group to promote public awareness about energy efficiency, natural resource conservation, and collective action to promote community sustainability. And, whereas, the city has taken steps to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and to increase energy efficiency, including purchasing hybrid vehicles using biodiesel fuel, expanding recycling programs, adopting a policy for sustainable public facilities, and requiring green roofs and/or LEED certification in special exception projects. And, whereas, Earth Hour is both an international and local symbolic event organized by World Wildlife Fund to raise awareness about climate change issues and to encourage businesses, individuals, and governments to take action to reduce their carbon emissions and their impact on the environment in their daily lives and operations. And whereas, the Environmental Services Council's Energy Efficiency and Climate Change Task Force has demonstrated leadership in sponsoring this observance of Earth Hour in the city. And, whereas, Earth Hour asks all citizens, businesses, organizations, and government agencies to turn off all non-essential lighting for one hour beginning at 8:30 PM on March 23, 2013, and to encourage citizens and businesses to commit to actions they can take in the coming year to reduce their carbon footprint and conserve energy. And...
Now, therefore... Now, therefore, I, Mayor Bruck, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim March 23, 2013, between 8:30 and 9:30 PM as Earth Hour in the City of Falls Church, and encourage residents, businesses, and organizations to participate in this event and to commit to actions to conserve energy and reduce carbon emissions. In witness thereof, I unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, to be fixed this 11th day of March 2013. Mr. Shields, do we have somebody on behalf of staff who is going to be receiving the proclamation?
I'd be happy to accept it on behalf of staff. Let's have Ralph...
Ralph?
Yeah, he'd be a great person to accept it.
Ralphie, you're more than welcome to say anything if you wish.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Bruck. I just want to say, as Chairman of the Climate Change Energy Efficiency Task Group, I'd like to thank you for reading and signing this proclamation and for your past and ongoing support of climate change and energy efficiency issues within the city. Thank you.
Is there anybody in the public who's here to be sworn in for boards and commissions? Ms. Bishow, are you aware of anybody who's here to be sworn in? Okay, thank you. We are on to receipt of public comments. And I just received some speaker slips, so I'm just going to put these in order. Bear with me for one minute. I'm going to take items that are not on the agenda first, but if there are any speakers who wish to address items that are on the agenda, I'm happy to take those during public comment or when we get to the item on the agenda. Just let me know as we move forward. So the first speaker slip that I have is from staff member Dana Lewis on the Affordable Housing Expo coming up.
Good evening. I'm Dana Lewis with the City Housing and Human Services Department, and I just wanted to once again invite you to come out this Saturday to the Northern Virginia Regional Housing Expo. This is a free event. It's open to anyone that is looking for any type of housing. We will be highlighting renting and homeownership opportunities. We'll have workshops. There should be 60 exhibitors, probably over about 700 participants. This is our third annual event. It's a regional collaborative which includes the cities of Alexandria Falls Church, the Virginia Housing Development Authority, the counties of Arlington, Fairfax, and Loudon, and the towns of Herndon and Manassas. And our collaboration won the Hand Award last year for Best Government Initiative. Like I said, it's a free event, plenty of free parking at Metro and the University of UVA parking lot. So please come out and join us, and we'll look forward to seeing you there.
Thanks, Dana. Thank you. The next speaker slip that I have for items not on the agenda is Barbara Cram regarding FCC TV. Ms. Cram?
It looks like I'm prepared here, but I'm not. I'm just carrying this for security purposes. Thanks for having this meeting tonight and allowing people to speak. I'm here because, for one reason, to speak to FCC TV. I understand from some information that I received earlier in the week that the schools are thinking about defunding in order to get to their lower budget numbers that are needed. And one of my best experiences I'll never forget in the city was 2004, I went with Dave Eckert when he interviewed Chip Haley at the station. I had no idea the station was there. And I know many of you, the first time you saw it, you had the same experience, like, wow, this is amazing. It is a TV station, but more importantly, it's a video production that there that allows us to have these meetings. It allows us to have Planning Commission, School Board, all kinds of transparency that I'm so proud of in our city, that it's a small government, that we're able to reach out to each other and speak to the issues in a calm and informed way. And I think the TV channel goes a long way to allowing us to be fully informed, because you're not going to go just half-cocked off and write a letter if you haven't watched the proceedings to see who said what. I'm also, one of the first things I did was to get my producer's certificate so that I could do films, videos, excuse me, Mike would correct me for that, videos, so that I could record a lot of what I thought was cool about the City of Falls Church. And one of the first things I did was the City Walks with Dave, and we did a five-part series with Marie Yoc and a lot of people that are no longer here. So now it's historical, and it's going to be, that and several other films were put in, the Jamestown 2007 time capsule. So in 2057, they will be looking at our FCC TV films that we were able to do at the station there. We just spent, well, actually the schools did, spent a lot of money on the Mac servers. I think they're five or 10 terabyte, so that we can keep all of the video on there to do the editing, Final Cut Pro. It's a very complicated program, and it takes a couple of years to really get the hang of it, or several hours, or doing a Howard Herman film for his retirement. And I've just enjoyed my association with it in a leadership capacity, but also as a person that's on the ground with it. And I think more than anything else in our city, it gives us something very special that's very intimate, because we can watch our neighbors, and we can watch friends and people we don't know on the television channel and get an idea of what they're about. And the same thing for you all on the dais. It's important for people to see you, how you vote, how you think, and it's the best two-way street we have available to us in this digital age of everything's on text and emails. You don't have much time for meetings, and I think this allows us to have that sort of feeling that, much like Bonanza, you're in the living room every Monday night. I don't remember if it was on Monday night, but, you know, for those of us that are old enough to remember Bonanza. Anyway, thank you for your time, and I hope that you'll find some way to work this out. And I'd like to make also, take one second, to say we have a three-way agreement with the schools, the city, and the public access channel. And the public access channel is whom I'm representing. I think it's very important that whatever is worked at is worked at with all three partners. We have an agreement. I think we need to stay with our agreement and work out what the details are in order to fund it correctly. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. All right. The next speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Tom Clinton regarding the DMV To Go.
Good evening. My name is Tom Clinton. I live at 711 Hillwood Avenue. I just wanted to report out on the DMV To Go RV visit we had on Friday over at the Bull America Parking Lot. I think we set a new record, 135 customers and 130 transactions. So a lot of very grateful people that didn't have to go to Tysons or Four Mile Run. And what we've done is set up a standing date. It's the second Friday of the odd months of 2013. So if you look at your license and it's expiring later this year, you know, come on by. It's a very pleasant experience. So the next date is May 10, followed by July 12, September 13, and November 8. And then we're going to have the mobile unit here at City Hall on April 23 to celebrate the 7th anniversary of the DMV Select Office. So this is the To Go, which is a full-service DMV, which does things we can't do in the Select Office. And it's a very, very intimate, very small kind of setting, very accessible to people. They've got a lift ramp in the back, and just really good hands-on service that you really, people just walk out very impressed. So keep it in mind if you need it later this year. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tom. All right. The next speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Gary Laporta. Actually, that item's not for action, so we're not going to be taking public comment on it. So if there's any budget issues, we'll take them now. But there'll be plenty of opportunity also for public hearing on the budget as well.
You know I like to be proactive. So Gary Laporta, 130 Chanel Terrace. I was hoping to get to this later, but first of all, I want to second what Barbara had to say about Falls Church Community Television. It's an important feature in our city, and those of us who don't crawl out here every Monday night to watch you like to do it at home. So the other things I want to mention, after just reviewing this wonderful document, as I go through on page 55 of the general fund revenues, I want to mention things such as how much money the business community is adding to our funds and how much we are going to be beholden to them, particularly the 42.8% increase in license fees and permits, which we look forward to. The other area that I want to point out is in the B poll, of course, as I usually am for, the professional services rate of 52 cents and the retail owner commercial of 52 cents being out of line with most other jurisdictions. And if we want to have more commercial properties and more commercial businesses and professional services in there, we need to incentivize them, not de-incentivize them. And lastly, I haven't found it all yet, but our city services are second to none, and that's mostly due to our dedicated employees. And I would surely like to see some sort of recognition in perhaps a salary increase of some sort that doesn't end up being, we're going to give you an increase, but we're going to take back this much money this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. And the rest of the items that I have are items on the agenda, but I'm happy to take those comments now. Not seeing anybody come forward. I'll hold those until we get to those items on the agenda. Ms. Bishow, if you would summarize the written comments we've received.
I think some of the arts community people were a little confused, and they did want to do it now, if you don't mind?
Not at all. Ms. Cram?
I'm going to stay for the duration, but a lot of folks want to, you know, not stay. I'm here tonight for our Little City Catch Foundation and our Grants Review Committee. In January, the applicants for the grant funds to be reviewed by the Grant Review Committee for the Little City Catch Foundation, which was established in September, were reviewed over a period of time, and I think February 19, they were given back to us, and then we sent them on to council and work session and through the processes here. Tonight, we have several of our members here from Creative Cauldron, Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation, we have the Planning Commission, we have friends of Cherry Hill, two friends of Cherry Hill. I'm going to make note of that. Oh, that's a third friend. I'm a friend, too. And then we have the Chamber of Commerce. Sally couldn't be here tonight. And we have several other organizations, the library, Board of Trustees, the schools, the city schools, the Victoria Society at Falls Church, the, I know I'm going to forget somebody, the Village Preservation and Improvement Society, anything that has to do with the arts and cultural part of our city. And we're very pleased to be able to have the support of Sue Ehrman, Howard Herman, and Elizabeth Morton, who are our Grants Review Committee, a very stellar group they are. And these folks know of the city and didn't really have any connection too much to these groups, particularly about any of the grants, but reviewed them. And then they categorized them, went through all the way to the end with the top grant on top. And we were very grateful for their very, very studious study of those grants and the awards that were recommended to council. And we urge you to seek... Would you all stand, please, so I don't miss anybody? Thank you very much. Jenny Paxton doesn't stand, but she's part of it. So we're really grateful, and many of them, I think, have written letters to that effect. But it's very special, and this is a really historic moment for them. And it reaffirms, and it's a nice pat on the back for many of us who've done a lot of volunteer work, to be able to do some projects that really need to be done. So we're very grateful, and we just wanted to come and say that, right, everybody?
Yes.
Resounding yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. Right. The next speaker slip that I have is from Ms. Barbara Sharp.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Sharp. I live at 408 Southwest Street in Falls Church, Utah. I'm here tonight on behalf of Creative Cauldron as member of the Board of Directors. I want to thank council for their support of Creative Cauldron. We are in support of the Little City Catch Grant Program and appreciative of the Catch Grant that Creative Cauldron will be receiving. The World of Stories programs that the Creative Cauldron will be doing in the community include programs that are really wonderful. Some of the programs have been performed at the Creative Cauldron at Arts Space Falls Church on Maple Avenue. I attended the wonderful show Tales of West Africa, which will be taken on the road for schoolchildren, including ones in the City of Falls Church here. To be able to experience the wonder of storytelling magic enhanced by talented actors and whimsical puppets used will stretch the imagination as far as only the arts can do. Creative Cauldron is a wonderful asset to the little city. If you have not yet attended any programs there, may I warmly invite you to come to our current show, Peter Pan and Wendy, and our upcoming programs, including Thunder Knocking on the Door in May. Again, thank you for your support of Creative Cauldron and specifically the World of Stories Catch Grant.
Thanks very much, Barbara. I think we were all looking for some kind of, I don't want to say how, but some kind of demonstration that we had last week. She did great. All right. The next speaker slip that I have is from Ms. Laura Hall. Ms. Hall?
No, I'm not going to sing, thankfully. But I just wanted to say thank you. I want to echo what Barbara said and really applaud all of you sitting up there on the dais. I'm always a little bit in awe, the fact that when you speak, you're several tiers below, all of you. You, as elected officials, took a very brave step, supporting something that is as intangible as the arts or the support of the history and culture of your community. It's not easy in tough budgeting times. We understand that completely. But for all of us in the trenches and the pioneers that experience the joy and exhilaration that comes to the audiences or the young participants in our programs, we know that you've spent well and that your dollars will multiply in their effect on our community. We are very pleased to have such wonderful colleagues here in this little city, just people who've dedicated their lives to keeping history alive and keeping these wonderful programs in addition to. So Creative Cauldron feels very privileged to be among this stellar group. And a special thank you to Jenny Paxton and Barb Cram for pursuing this three-year-long journey to actually get a professional funding body established here in the city. This is an historic moment. We start small, but I think that the leverage we will be able to generate in terms of other grant funding and other things that match will be a wonderful start to, I think, a very rich future for the arts in Falls Church. So thank you.
Thank you, Laura. All right. The next speaker slip that I have is from Ms. Nikki Graves-Henderson.
Good evening. I will not sing either, but I can dance, if you like. I'm Nikki Graves-Henderson. I live at 307 South Maple Avenue with my husband in a home that is 100 years old this year. We'd like to take this opportunity to thank you, the council, and the mayor and vice mayor, the city staff, for all the hard work that you've done on ensuring that the new grant opportunity that the nonprofits are able to avail themselves of actually happened. We have been working, Tanner Hill has been working on a heritage walking tour for several years now, and that tour has already won an award from the American Planning Association. While many people did not realize why we were pursuing it so doggedly, I would like to share with you that if you've gone on the walking tour, I guarantee you, you will learn things that you did not know about Falls Church history, past and present. We've been able to document through research, other grants, the history of Falls Church that has been forgotten. Many aspects of our history will be gone if we don't have a tangible way of spreading it to others. And our tour, the funding is to go towards an audio component for the tour, which means that people who zip through Falls Church on Route 7 or South Maple or South Washington slash 29 will be able to avail themselves to a little snippet of Falls Church history. And hopefully, they will come back to learn some of the full stories. Here in Falls Church, we've done some very important things, and I think it's crucial for us to be able to share that with the world. Not only are we the home of the first rural branch of the NAACP in the nation, recently, we became the home of Hall of Famer Edwin B. Henderson. We want people to know that he lived here for over 50 years and that he made a contribution to our nation's history, and Falls Church was a really big part of that. So I'd like to say thank you for having the foresight and the vision and understanding the significance of what we're doing and the importance of having our city support us. I cannot tell you how much it is. We've applied for grants, and one of the things that they always ask is, does your community, your local branch of government, support this? And this is a tangible step that shows that our city, yes, indeed, does support this. So again, thank you. We appreciate it, and we're looking forward to other groups getting funding as well.
Thank you, Nikki. Vice Mayor Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before our arts advocates and colleagues leave, I just want to thank you. You thanked us, but the real thanks go to you. You've persevered. You've literally been pioneers in more ways than I guess you probably ever imagined. And I do believe that the future of this city is inextricably bound up with a strong arts and cultural community. So thank you for the work that you have done, and I look forward to continuing to work with you in the future.
Thank you. Those are all the speaker slips that I have. So thank you to the Catch Group and to staff for getting these applications before us, and we're going to take that up just shortly. Are there any other members of the public that wish to address council? Ms. Bishow, if you would summarize the written comments we've received?
Counsel, you received a letter from Mark Kay, who supports the Harris Teeter Project in its full size and who said that bigger is better for the downtown. Dan Henderson supports the Harris Teeter Project and other mixed-use development in the city. Sarah Rakowski signed the petition supporting Anthony's Restaurant. Sally Phillips commended city staff for acknowledging her emails so quickly. Brian Rye at 613 11th Street supports the school's request for $100 million for new high school improvements to other city schools. He says he's willing to pay higher taxes for that, but he would like some mechanism to be put in place to ensure that once the cost of the school expansion has been taken care of, that the taxpayers will receive immediate tax relief. He also supports the Harris Teeter Project, but he is concerned about the increased housing units in the project because of student growth at the schools. And he hopes that any ADUs can be specifically earmarked for city policemen, teachers, or other Falls Church civil servants. And you also, you received by email many emails of support for Falls Church television financing, funding. The following individuals have expressed support for funding Falls Church cable television. They discuss how this provides the public with the opportunity to view local programming in council meetings, provide workshops on TV production, allow high school students to participate in programming and skill development that promotes an interest in pursuing college degrees in media and communication. It's a great community asset. It provides a voice for local citizens to express themselves through the public television. It provides for government transparency. It allows school games, events, and programs to be televised, and it documents ongoing city history. The people who expressed their support were Constance Phelps at 319 Renzway, Rena Marsh at 226 South Virginia Avenue, Tom Gittens at 153 West Anadale Road, Andrew Curtin, who's a member of the FCC TV board, Arthur Pearson at 1107 Lincoln Avenue, Sally Phillips, who's a resident, Bill Abel at 410 South Maple.
Counsel, any requests at this point? Okay, thank you. We are on to report of the city manager to council and the beginning of the budget presentation. And I know that we've got some new council members, and normally the way that the process works at this point is, Mr. Shields provides his proposed budget. We can begin some of the general questions, but we have plenty of reserved time for discussion and a much deeper dive into the budget. So this is really Mr. Shields' opportunity to provide us with his proposal, and also to hear from the schools as we begin the deliberations. So it's really a kickoff, not intended to be a drill down at this point. And then we'll talk later this evening about what the calendar looks like as far as the budget meetings that we have upcoming. So, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Baruch, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here before you tonight to present the FY14 budget recommendations. I'll say at the outset that I'm a little intimidated to be here in front of the arts community. Laura Hall will have a critique, I think, of the production values of this presentation, and I'm worried that they might be found wanting. The budget that's before the city council tonight has already been touched by many of your boards and commissions already up to this point, and your staff. The library board has deliberated on the library budget. The school board has spent many hours working through their requests to the city council, and the planning commission has spent hours reviewing the CIP and providing recommendations to you. Either consciously or unconsciously, I think all of those who've been working on this budget have been aware of the bigger picture. And I always start off the budget presentation by referring to the council's vision statement. In the budget document itself, you'll see in every call center, a description of how the initiatives in the budget that are funded in this budget document align with the council vision statement. For creating outstanding government and public outreach, world-class schools, sound finances, a diverse community, to promote neighborhood preservation and community life, environmental harmony, successful development, innovation, and a special place. You ultimately be the judge of how we do on that as you work towards budget adoption later in April. Before I do start the budget presentation, I just want to thank a couple of key members of staff, all of our department directors, who I think have done an amazing job for many years of helping get this organization through a recession and a lot of challenges on the revenue side. But this budget in particular, our CFO, Richard LaContre, who has guided all of our department directors in budget development. My main role has been to go into his office and eat his cashews and philosophize with him, but he has done tremendous work on this budget document. Melissa Ryman, his deputy, really keeps it all together and is critical for the budget process. And Cindy Mester, with her work with the planning commission to bring you recommendations on the capital improvements program. Quick overview. I will present budget on the, first on the general fund operating budget, then I will step aside, and the chair of the school board, Susan Carney, will step forward and present the school budget to you, and then I will take the dais back to go through the CIP and the utility funds. In terms of the overview of the budget, the budget presentation complies with budget guidance, and we'll talk about that in more detail. A key feature of the general fund budget, or the general government budget, is addressing stormwater improvements that have been shown to be inadequate with recent flooding, and also to address major federal mandates that are coming down the pike. And we propose to do so with a stormwater utility fee. This comes out of the recommendations of the stormwater, of the watershed management plan adopted by the council this time last year, and also through many discussions with council as a lead-up to this budget. The budget does provide for significant investments in facilities, parks, schools, streets, in the environment, in infrastructure, and in our workforce. And as we go through those, we'll also be discussing with the council the significant unmet needs on the general government side, and I'm sure the schools will present unmet needs on the school side as well. With respect to real estate taxes, just to start off with a point of interest, the 2014 budget as presented would require a tax rate increase of six cents or $1.33, but there's a couple of key things to understand with that number, as the council deliberates an advertised tax rate to give you flexibility to make decisions between now and April 22nd, when the budget will be adopted. This budget as presented does not include funding for Falls Church TV. That was taken out of the school board budget, and we were notified of that this week or last week, and so that is out of the budget, as is an item in the school board budget, which is a revenue source for rent for wreck and park use of school facilities. That's not in the budget. And the school board budget also does not provide funding for the agreement of 2011 for the funding of TJ Elementary School debt. So I wanted the council to be aware of those. Taken together, if revenues were used to solve for those issues, that would require two cents on the tax rate. In addition, the stormwater utility in this budget is moved out of the general fund, and the level of effort and the level of funding for stormwater is increased in this budget to be paid for with a stormwater fee. If that is moved back to the general fund, if the council decides not to create the enterprise fund, but to keep that level of effort, that would require about five and a half cents on the tax rates to move that back into the general fund. And in addition, we have, on the general fund side, identified unmet needs of about $2.6 million, and as council goes through those, there may be a desire for some flexibility on those items. So obviously, there's major pressure on the real estate tax rate, and we'll talk about that in the context of overall revenues. The assessed values for 2013, overall, our forecast will increase by 2.9% for this tax year. The largest growth is in the area of apartments, with 5% growth in assessed value. Single-family homes and townhouses at 3.5%, and condos and commercial are relatively flat. And the flatness in the commercial sector has been a feature really since FY 2010, or declines in the commercial area. I do want to note that our 2011 statistics on assessed values, our sales-to-assessed-value ratio is just about 96%, which is a very good place for your assessed values to be. And I think possibly more important, the coefficient of dispersion, which is a measure of fairness in terms of the accuracy of our assessments across the board, is at 7%, and that's the fourth-best out of the hundreds of localities that do property tax assessment in the state of Virginia. Our revenue picture overall, council's very familiar with this chart, we do have a heavy reliance in our general fund on real estate taxes of 60%, and 40% of our revenues are derived from personal property taxes, meals and utility taxes, sales taxes, business licenses, licenses and permits, state and federal funds, and then service fees and recovered costs. The recovered costs are principally in the wreck and parks area, where most of our programs there are paid for by fees. I noted in the last slide that 60% of our revenues come from real estate. That's not always been the case. Back in 2007, before the recession, real estate accounted for closer to 50% of our overall revenues. And if you see what happened over time, is that all of our other revenues either declined through the recession, the loss of the water fund transfer, meals tax revenues dropping, and over the whole period have remained relatively flat. And real estate has been looked to and called upon to meet general government and school needs. I think also compounding this is that over this period of time, with greater reliance on real estate revenues, the commercial sector has been relatively flat, and so it has been the residential sector that has borne the heaviest burden with respect to this trend. And this shows that play out with respect to the median homeowner's property tax bill, measured since 2006 through 2013, seven tax years. With respect to the change between 2012 and 2013, and remember, our taxes go on a calendar year, not a fiscal year, but the increase from $7,030 to $7,637 for the median property tax bill in the city, a $600 increase, approximately $262 of that is from assessed value growth, and $345 of that increase is due to the tax increase. If you take a look at the rate of annual growth over this period from 2006 to 2013, it comes to approximately a 3.3% annualized growth in the average homeowner's tax bill. This slide will wrap up our discussion on revenues for tonight, and as the mayor noted, there will be deeper dives in all of this material as we go forward. This is intended to be a high-level discussion for tonight. The bottom line for revenues is an 8.2% growth in revenues across the board. That does factor in the increase in the tax rate at the six-cent rate that I discussed on the earlier slide, which would generate an 8.3% increase in revenues in the real estate area. All of our other revenues reflect what our FY12 actuals are, augmented by the latest data that we have from our FY13 actuals. So those are the best forecasts we have at the present time. I would just note that here at the other, this decrease in revenues comes from two sources. One is, we do have a decrease in fines in the public safety area. The other area of decrease here is the decrease in the school board's funding for the debt service for the TJ Elementary School at $186,000, which is not counted as a revenue in this budget. On the expenditure side, council's also familiar with this pie chart. This is where the money goes. 45% of the funds go towards education, 9% towards administration, 3% of our spending goes for our court system and judicial services, 14% for police and fire, which we contract with Arlington County. 7% of our budget is for public works. Now, this budget does not include stormwater. It would have in prior years, but stormwater's been moved to an enterprise fund. Recreation parks and library is 6% of our budget. Our health and human services are 3% of our budget. Our economic development and our planning activity, community development, is 5%. And then debt service is 6% of our expenditures. The contribution to reserves and pay-as-you-go CIP together are 2% of overall spending in the budget. If you break it down between these big areas of spending, like revenues, the overall expenditure in the budget is 8.2% growth. General government is growing by $1.3 million, or 3.9%. Grants is listed as growing by $943,000, and that's misleading. What this reflects is the state's change to have our money that supports WAMADA, Metro Rail and Metro Bus, which used to go straight to the NVTC to be distributed per the compact, now runs through the city. So that's the lion's share of over $1 million of this grant amount, and for the grants that are actually visible to us, there is a slight decrease. Debt service is increasing pursuant to the capital improvements program. The school transfer, per the school board request, is a $3.8 million increase, or a 12.9% increase, and that is inclusive of the school operating budget plus the community services fund, and that does reflect the cut in the cable channel as well, which is baked into that number. With respect to our pay-as-you-go and capital reserves, that is increasing to $1.1 million, with $500,000 for reserves and $600,000 for pay-as-you-go. And the fund balance restoration is decreasing by $900,000. In effect, that's a dividend for achieving our fund balance target ahead of schedule. What this means is that all other things being equal, this budget would require a three-cent higher tax rate, but for that fact. But again, the bottom line, expenditure growth of 8.2%. Now, in the general government budget changes, which I just noted were an increase of $1.28 million overall, it's important to note that there's really three components to it, two of which we do not control, and one which we do control. Our jurisdictional contracts are going up by $539,000, fully funding our retirement, or the actuarially required contribution, and health benefits. This is, retirement is the lion's share of it, is another third or $420,000. And so all other general government growth is $421,000 net after taking out stormwater costs out of the general fund. Overall, the all-other aspect of the budget is about a 2% growth. This is a chart of general fund positions over time. Between 2013 and 2014, the budget that is before us right now, we have a net increase of a request of one additional position. But as we are aware, traditionally, our staffing level has been over 200 in the general fund, and with the decrease of 14% in 2012, and now we're about 11% of what our average was prior to the recession, our workforce has been required to be far more productive and shoulder a far heavier workload to provide services. Very briefly, on position changes that are in the budget, in public safety, we are requesting one new dispatch position. And in the area of IT, we're requesting a new program and database administrator, which would be paid for through cuts and other areas of the IT budget. And then in court services, we do have the loss of a probation officer, which is a vacancy. That's not funded in this budget due to an analysis of the caseloads that we have with juvenile court. So we have staffing of two now in our court services unit, as opposed to three, which we have historically had. With regard to employee compensation, our goals, of course, are to maintain competitiveness within the labor market and recruit and retain high-performing workforce. Healthcare is a very slight increase for Kaiser, 0.1% increase in premiums, a 10% increase in premiums for United Health. And our pensions, we are now at 16% of payroll to fund our pensions. 11% of that is paid for by the city, and either 5% or 7% of that is paid for by the employees. 7% if you're a police officer, 5% for everyone else. Our salary in the budget is a request for a 3% increase in salary for our workforce. This is the last slide, and then I will turn the mic over to Chairman Carney for the school budget presentation. There will be discussion about unmet needs as we go through the departmental budgets, as well as what we plan to accomplish with the budget. Our operating budgets really have been flat since the fiscal year six years ago. In the spring of 2007, the city council adopted a budget which was at the same level of funding for the general fund operations as the FY13 budget. Now, we are experiencing a 3.9% growth, but those accumulated needs, we do want to articulate those and have the community and the council be aware of those. And I've listed just a few of them, and I won't list all of them here, but they include IT reinvestment. They include maintenance of our radio systems for public safety and public works. Prior to the recession, we did have a radio system manager in the police department, and that position's been lost to us. The sustainability coordinator, with the sale of the water system, our director of public utilities is our sustainability coordinator, and the city benefits greatly from Brenda Creel's work in that area and on the climate change initiative. With the sale of the system, that will no longer be available to us, and that's identified as an unmet need in this budget. With respect to school resource officers, we have public utilities is our sustainability coordinator, and the city benefits greatly from Brenda Creel's work in that area and on the climate change initiative. With the sale of the system, that will no longer be available to us, and that's identified as an unmet need in this budget. With respect to school resource officers, we have one for our four schools. We do not have an additional position funded in this budget. To do so would be about $80,000. $56,000 in police vehicle maintenance is a shortfall. In public works, in terms of attempting to replace our fleet and our equipment on a regular and sustainable basis, that would require $560,000 of equipment replacement. In the area of development services, to really implement the area plan that the council has adopted, and to convert that area plan into zoning and to help carry that out, we believe would require at least an additional position at $100,000. And lastly, I've listed here affordable housing, working with staff to try to put together a more concrete proposal on strategies for affordable housing and support in that area. We've identified $380,000 of unmet needs there. So as we go through the budget, we will discuss these. We recognize that our task is to present a budget that is in line with the council's vision, but is also cost-effective and affordable. And so these are tough compromises that we have to make. And I will now turn it over to Chairman Carney for the school presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Shields. Council, what I would propose, unless folks have objections, is we ask questions at the end, so we see both the school and the city budget overall. If that makes sense?
Enter Keyla. Did you hit this?
Yeah, you can either do it there or there.
Thanks.
Chair Carney.
Good evening, Mayor Baruch, members of city council colleagues. Thanks for having me here tonight. It's a pleasure to present to you the budget request from the school board for the fiscal year 2014. I know that there's a lot of information, both in Mr. Shields' budget and my own, so I'm keeping this at a pretty high level, and we'll look forward to our work sessions and other conversations ongoing as we move through the budget process to give you a lot of detail. This presentation is focused really on four questions. One, what is our request? Two, what are the key drivers behind that? What are the priorities that you'd see exhibited in the budget? And then finally, what can we expect going forward to give you a peek into years beyond fiscal year 2014? I mean, 14. So what is our request? You heard the top line from Mr. Shields in his presentation. It's a $43,684,000 budget. It's comprised of three components. One is the operating budget, which is what actually we use to operate our schools, the community service budget, where we have traditionally had the television station, we have our daycare program and other things there, and then food service, this is where we feed the kids. If we break out the operating budget, which is what gets most attention during these budget cycles each year, you can see here the city transfers to the operating budget, state funds, sales tax, and so on. You'll notice that federal funds, we expect to go down dramatically along with other sources of funding in this particular fiscal year. Spending by category, I'm happy to note that this year we have increased our spending in the classroom by 2%. It's now 74% of our budget. Just to give you a little context for that, Governor McDonnell has tried a couple of years to pass a law in Virginia that we would be required to spend 65% of our budget in the classroom, and here in Falls Church, we're way ahead of that. One way we do it, as you can see, is we keep our administrative costs low. We've lowered them again by 2% this year. Our administrative costs are only 4%, which is incredible for all that our staff does for that small amount of money. If the budget request is approved, we will be sitting at just a little bit north of $14,000 per student in spending from the city. And if you look at this chart, you'll notice that that gets us not quite back to what we were spending in 2007. So we're asking for a big increase, but we're still not close to where we have been in the past, and that, of course, doesn't reflect inflation, which would make it much lower. We have found cost savings in our budget from staffing adjustments, retirement plans, and other things. I want to particularly call out the $100,000 of savings for the daycare partnership. Our daycare program is funding new play equipment for our kids out of their budget, so we don't have to do it out of our school operating budget, and we appreciate that very much on their part. And then also $350,000 in savings from community fundraising partnerships. And I want to shout out to the Education Foundation for their support for the schools, to all of our affiliated organizations, our boosters, our PTAs, and others who save the taxpayers and the city by the good work that they do to help fund important programs and materials for the schools. So thanks to all of those community groups. And then finally, in spite of the increase that we're requesting in the budget this year, we have a lot of unfunded needs. You'll see them summarized here, starting with $350,000 the superintendent had recommended in her budget, which was not funded in the request from the school board, and then staffing and salary and technology, and we'll have plenty of time to discuss these things if you'd like as we go through the process. So what are the key drivers of this request? There are two, and the first is just kids. We have lots of kids. We have a lot more kids than we had a number of years ago. If you look here, you'll see that we have almost 2,400 kids, 500 more than we had in 2007. That's about a 25% increase in kids that have come through the door. So that is the first driver, is just the addition of lots of families with children moving to the city. And unfortunately, when the kids come to school, it doesn't necessarily time itself with what the city can afford. And so what this chart shows is that since 2007, you'll see the blue line, which is the increase in student enrollment, the percentage increase, and you see it climbing steadily, steadily, steadily up. And then the pink line that you see at the bottom is the spending per student here in the city, and then the yellow line is the city dollars spent per student. And so what we have here is a gap. We've had lots of kids coming into our school system, and we haven't been able to spend to keep up with that. And what that means is it means not enough materials, not enough teachers, you know, not enough of all the things that you have to have when you have this many kids. And this is a dramatic increase in kids for us here in Falls Church. As you know, the last several years, we've had record increases in the number of children. The second reason is that we haven't been able to keep up in city funding with the increase in the number of children, and that's what this chart gets to. If you see the green line, that's the school transfer over the years from fiscal year '08 to present. The red line is the increase in overall city revenue during that time period, and then the blue line is the increase in enrollment. So you can see the school transfer, you know, kind of bumped up in fiscal year '09 and then has been down since until this particular year, when you know we increased our school transfer. But enrollment kind of has the same slope that the city income has had, and there's a gap there. There's a gap there. And so what you're seeing in our request this year aims to start to make up that gap and get where we need to be in terms of funding for our schools. And then finally, just another way to look at this is the percentage of city general revenue that has gone to the schools, has traditionally been, at least since I was on the school board and in the years before that where I was watching, 45%, 46%, 47% sometimes, as you can see on the left in these light green bars. But starting with fiscal year 11, we've seen the percentage of the transfer to schools of the city general fund decreasing to 42%, 40%, 42%, and that's the gap that you, in spending, that we're trying to begin to make up with the increase in students. So what are the priorities in this particular budget that we are recommending? Last year, we introduced you and the community to the five pillars of excellence. These are the things that have gotten us where we are in terms of excellence in our schools in Falls Church, the recipe, if you will, for success. And this year, the budget priorities are focused on small schools, small classes, readiness to learn, and outstanding staff. We have not increased our teaching and learning, our 21st century skills so much in this particular budget. And I'm just going to step you through quickly what these things are. And it occurred to me over the weekend as I was working with Dr. Jones and Mr. Kimball to prepare this presentation, that I think sometimes in the schools, we assume that everybody understands why the things we do are important for kids, and maybe they don't. So I just, I'm going to talk a little bit about that as we go through this presentation. So first, small schools. You know, why are small schools important? That's something we've had in Falls Church for probably as many years as we've had our school system, 61 years now. And it's important for a lot of reasons, right? The intimacy is what helps kids learn and helps us get results, right? It's knowing every single child and no child falling through the cracks. It's knowing the families and how, what's going on in the families and how that affects the child and their learning. It's a collaborative kind of community feel in the schools that the children pick up on, and it's some things that are really practical as well, right? We have to have enough play space. We have to be able to schedule lunch, so the kids aren't eating lunch at breakfast time or at the end of the day. And then we have to have ample enrichment and activity times. So there are a lot of reasons why small schools are important for the kids. Now, I have to say that for us here in Falls Church, small schools don't feel so small to us anymore as compared to what they were, for instance, when my children were in school, right? TJ was about half the size. It'll be next year when my kids were in school. But still, what we're trying to do is load balance, that's, I guess it's an awkward way to talk about kids, but load balance the schools to keep them as small as they can be, given the land constraints we have in the city, which don't allow us to build more, you know, smaller schools. So this budget funds a number of things. We're moving the 5th grade to TJ, as you know, with the completion of the new TJ wing. We're moving the 8th grade from George Mason to Mary Ellen Henderson to be in middle school where they should be, and we're moving the pre-K classrooms from Mount Daniel to TJ. They'll live in the trailers on a temporary basis until we can get the Cherry Street facility ready for them, and that will allow us to have enough space for the Kindies and the first graders at Mount Daniel. Second is small classes. Once again, why is this important? One-on-one time for teachers to have with kids. This makes a tremendous difference in their learning. Increased instruction, personal feedback, differentiation, activity-based learning, all of the things that once again teach our kids to be creative in their thinking and work and to achieve. And then the last thing is, once again, a very practical thing. You know, there are state rules about how many square feet you need to have for kids in classes based on class size, and we've bumped up against all of those things and don't, in some places, have adequate square footage per student unless we approve this budget request. So this budget funds staff to reduce class sizes. Our class sizes have gotten up to the very top, 24. When I joined the school board, our policy and our actual class sizes were in the 20 to 21 range. They're now 24, headed on the way to 25, 6, and 27. This is a huge percentage increase in class size, and so this budget reduces that to the very top 24, at least temporarily, which it meets with our new policy and with best practices in education. I think every year, we talk to you about why outstanding staff are important. You know, research shows, and my personal experience, and that of my kids shows, that excellent teachers are where learning starts in schools, and we always want to keep our best teachers here in Falls Church. And so this particular budget request includes a step increase for all staff. A step increase isn't uniform, but it's around 2.5%, 3%, depending on where you are on our scale. There's also the 1% required VRS increase for all staff. You might recall from last year where the General Assembly kind of switched up the design of VRS, and over time, all of our staff will be required to donate 5% to their VRS retirement. So this 1% required increase for staff will turn around and come out of their paychecks as their contribution to VRS, and that 1% increase is required by law. And then finally, readiness to learn. You've heard over the past several years about the programs we've put in place to make sure that kids aren't hungry in Falls Church, that they have books to read at home to help in their learning and their literacy. This year, we've made a bit of a change, and an important one, in our free and reduced lunch program for families. As you know, the school board and the city, for kids that qualify for free reduced lunch, we pay all of that so that they get that for free. Some of it gets reimbursed by the federal government. This year, we've increased the threshold for families to qualify for this program because it's more expensive to live in Falls Church than it is in most areas in the country. So you notice here, a family with one child previously would not qualify if they made $25,000, excuse me, dollars a year, so we've switched that up. Okay, so now what can we expect in the future? I would say more of the same. If you look at this chart, 2014, next year, we've got 2,396 kids, we expect, including about 20 from new development. We're looking at almost 3,000 students in 2017. And so this includes our forecast that we do ourselves, the forecast in the Walden Coopin Center, and we've layered in what we know today from working with Mr. Shields and his team about students we would expect based on changes in city residential patterns. And the final thing I would say is that in terms of budget requests you might see in out-years is that it's a pretty simple equation from where we sit right now, which is more kids plus unfunded needs plus VRS increases, which we know are imminent next year, is going to equal continued large budget increases for the schools to keep us up with the little bodies that walk smiling into our doors every day. Thank you.
Carney, I think we're going to do the CIP, and then we'll open it up.
Okay. With respect to the capital improvements program, a lot of work has been done on the financial planning side to restore our financial condition. Infrastructure planning has really driven that, so we can invest in our school facilities, general government facilities, parks, et cetera. Over the five-year CIP, the breakout of where the money goes, about 82% of it is dedicated for school facilities, just over 10% for general government facilities. Public safety, which are investments either in fire apparatus or in Station 6 improvements is 1.6%. IT, recreation and parks at 1.3%, and public works, which is all transportation-related, at 4.2%. Again, stormwater will move to its own enterprise fund. That was a four-year look at the CIP. Looking more closely at 2014, we have just over $15.3 million of investment in our facilities in the city, and I'll touch on some of the key projects the council will be looking at for 2014. The Cherry Street preschool is funded in this budget at $2.4 million. The Mount Daniel expansion, architectural and engineering work is funded at $1 million. And then the city hall and public safety improvements are funded at $6.7 million for the FY14 capital plan. In public safety, again, all fire-related, to replace our pump engine and our ladder truck at $1.5 million, and then replacement of the bay doors and the windows at Station 6 at $538,000. The implementation of the West End Park master plan, which has been approved by the planning commission, is funded at $430,000. In the area of transportation, where we are benefiting from federal and state funding with local matches, is a total of $2.25 million of investment. This is where the money comes from for the capital plan. For FY14, $1.1 million of it comes from grants or is otherwise funded. The lion's share of it comes out of debt, $13.7 million in FY14 and 27.6 over the five-year period. Very importantly for our capital planning, the $104 million of school facilities, the George Mason High School project and the Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School expansion, both of those are in the CIP, but they assume that revenues are going to come either through economic development or the watersale agreement to make those feasible. And when we go through our debt service charts, we'll understand why that is. And then lastly, our pay-as-you-go aspect of the CIP is funded at $600,000 in the coming year. With respect to financial policy compliance, the budget does have $1.3 million for the following items, $500,000 for capital reserves. This is critical, I think, in terms of With respect to financial policy compliance, the budget does have one point three million dollars for the following items: five hundred thousand dollars for capital reserves. This is critical, I think, in terms of our overall capacity to meet these large capital projects in the out-years, to keep those in the budget and planned for them. Pay-as-you-go funding is at six hundred thousand dollars, and then restoration of fund balance at two hundred thousand dollars. Here's the story on fund balance over the past several years and then looking into the future over the life of our five-year CIP. With FY13, we're at our policy target, the green line being our policy target, seventeen percent of expenditures, the pink line being our policy floor. And then the columns are the dollar amount that's required for that. So we'll be just at about twelve million dollars of fund balance, which is our policy target. And then in the out-years, we stay a little bit below the target and hence the need for some level of minimal effort to maintain that at target. Debt service, if we implement fully the 2014 CIP, we'll have two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars of additional debt service on our books. That will come to six percent of expenditures. And then taking the full five-year CIP, but again, without the hundred and four million dollars for the major school projects, that would add one point four million dollars to debt service and a seven point one percent of expenditures. So overall, the CIP is affordable. We have to wrestle with the major school projects and get them within a financial plan. If you look at our debt service chart, this is the challenge. We do benefit, here's a couple of lines. The blue line is our existing debt service. So we benefit from the fact that in 2015, about a million dollars of debt service comes off of the books because of a prior bond issue being fully paid off. If we implement the CIP as proposed, this is our trajectory for debt service, topping out at just under six million dollars per year by 2018. If we were to fully fund the George Mason High School and the Mary Ellen Henderson expansion strictly with debt without growing our resources in other ways, this is the line of twelve percent of total expenditures policy limit. But just as a practical matter, our debt service would jump from four million dollars up to about fifteen million dollars to accomplish that. And we've got an affordability problem with that absent economic development and other things coming into play to make that feasible. So that is our challenge. With respect to utility funds, no change to water rates. We do have a change to our sewer rates pursuant to the 2011 sewer rate study to pay for the EPA mandated treatment plant upgrades. And then, of course, the stormwater fee, and those costs are moved out of the general fund. A little bit more detail on stormwater utility. What we're trying to accomplish with this, we're grappling with raising higher costs regardless of whatever mechanism we choose to fund them. And those higher costs are driven by federal Chesapeake Bay preservation mandates, the need to mitigate local funding, repair and replace infrastructure that was built, much of it sixty-plus years old, and improve water quality. In the proposed 2014 budget, we would have an operating budget of one point seven million dollars. This would be paid for through a stormwater fee that would be based on impervious coverage. And so the basis for that fee would be a unit of impervious coverage, which is measured at two hundred square feet, and we would do that through our GIS system. And the billing unit would be nineteen dollars and eighty cents with this budget per two hundred square feet. The cost for the average home with this program would be two hundred and seventy dollars per year. And of course, that will vary depending on how much impervious coverage that you have. And as homeowners take measures possibly to reduce their impervious coverage or treat their stormwater on-site, they can reduce that cost. Those costs are removed from the general fund, and at our current level, FY13 level of funding, stormwater constitutes about a penny on the tax rate or three hundred thousand dollars of spending. So with this program, we are increasing our level of effort and our resources towards this area to accomplish these goals. Lastly, the CIP for our utility funds. In the water fund area, our capital plan is essentially on hold pending the sale. I will note that our water fund budget assumes twelve months of operations pending the voter referendum in November. And if the voter referendum is approved and the sale goes forward, then we'll have the opportunity to amend the budget to reflect the impacts on the water fund, obviously, but as well as the sewer fund, stormwater fund, and the general fund. The sewer fund, basically two projects, the four hundred thousand dollars for rehabilitation of lines and just over a million dollars that's required for treatment plant upgrades. And then in the stormwater fund, in addition to the operating budget, we have one point eight million dollars of improvements to the stormwater system. Those are the improvements prioritized through the watershed management plan. Overall, with respect to budget guidance, I'll just touch on two key points in the budget guidance, and we'll go through it in more detail in work session. But the council called for government expenditures, general government expenditures growth to be covered by revenues generated solely by economic growth. Absent any tax increase, the economic growth would produce a four point one percent increase in revenues, and the general government growth is at three point nine percent. The council called for a focus on infrastructure, and this budget does that with a very strong capital program. It's been through the Planning Commission, and we look forward to going through that. I do think that in this budget, a great deal of the dynamism and the action in this budget is on the capital side. Lastly, discussion of the tax rate recommendation. As I noted earlier, we have a six cent increase that's built into the charts, but that does not include what would require about two cents to make up for the items that were reduced or sort of stranded through the school board's budget request. The stormwater utility, if those costs at that, at the current level of effort proposed in this budget are moved back to the general fund, we would need a five and a half cent increase. I would recommend that we advertise a rate of a dollar forty-one per hundred dollars of assessed value so that each of these, so that the council has the room to maneuver to address each of these issues. This is going to be discussed at a work session, at next Monday's work session, and I look forward to that discussion. The overall schedule, as we go through budget evaluation, we'll have our Monday and Thursday work sessions together. On Saturday, March sixteenth, and again on Saturday, April thirteenth at ten a.m., we'll have town hall meetings to discuss the stormwater, school budget, and the general fund budgets. We have public hearings, three of them, scheduled for Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, then Monday, April eighth, and then the final one on Monday, April twenty-second. That is the night that the council is scheduled to adopt the budget, and then the budget goes into effect on July first. All throughout the budget, we will keep our presentations posted up on the webpage at the URL that's listed here, and encourage the public to send comments in to budget@fallschurchva.gov, and I'll leave this up as we go through questions and answers. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Why don't we go ahead and open it up to council members for any questions? Why don't we just go down the line? And again, we're gonna have multiple meetings on this as well. So why don't we start with Mr. -- okay, why don't we start in the middle? Mr. Snyder.
I normally say thank you after presentations from the city manager, but I think I'll pass that up tonight. In all my nineteen to twenty years of local government budgets, I've never seen a budget more out of line with the economic realities in which we exist than this one. So my initial comment is there's an awful lot of work that's gonna have to be done on this. Now, the second point is, I wanna go and focus on these so-called orphaned expenditures because it seems we've got sort of a ping-pong match going on between the city manager and the schools, and I wanna try to get a handle on that. The amount is, let's see, we've got the Falls Church city TV station, which obviously I support. We're gonna fund that in one way or the other. Government transparency is too fundamental, so I don't understand this back and forth on that one. Perhaps the school board can tell us more about this rental for rec and park use of school facilities and the school board funding for TJ Elementary debt service. That's almost two cents on the tax rate right there. So there seems to be some disagreement, and I'm a little bit confused as to why that isn't in there and other expenditures not considered accordingly. So I wanna probe that some more. We can either get answers tonight or we can do that later. Now, we got a letter from the school board dated March seventh. I'm gonna, there are a lot of questions. I may come back to some more questions later. But in this letter, and I thought I'd read it because there's certainly things that I wanna pursue here, the bottom paragraph says that some city residents may react by saying this budget will require a huge tax increase. Well, we've seen how huge that is. However, the school board believes that there may be other resources in the city upon which to draw. For example, the city expects a revenue surplus again this year, part of which would be used to fund this budget. In addition to the city's fund balance is currently at the level required by policy. Further additions to that fund balance could be deferred until school and city operations are more adequately funded. There are other sources of funding that could be tapped as well before increasing taxes. I think I'll be very interested to learn what all these sources are and how they add up. I would finally ask our managements to consider where the typical taxpayer is right now in the city. If a person's a federal employee, they may be facing a furlough, loss of real income. If you've worked in the private sector, you've seen salaries frozen or reduced, you've seen unemployment go up and not come down very much in terms of real unemployment. So I would just say that as we begin this process, we have a great deal of work to do, and I'm committed to coming in at something much lower than what's been proposed in terms of the tax rate and still fund what we need to in terms of, of course, city services in the schools. Finally, as I understand it, the League of Women Voters and perhaps some other organizations will be looking at the increased enrollments, the reasons for it, the changes, et cetera, and that's a positive thing. And if, in fact, many of the school costs are being driven by increased numbers of students, then at least in part, we need to understand before we approve five hundred more residential units whether we've perhaps created a spiral that is so unmanageable that it makes the city unsustainable. So I think we're gonna need to look at our development policies at the same time we look at this budget. So those are some initial questions, some interest that I'm gonna have, but I certainly want the community debate to go, not just this year's budget, where we're gonna be in the future, and what our development policies need to be in the future in order to try to keep up with some of these expenditures. So I'll come back to some others, but since I've been designated the lead, those are some initial comments and some questions that I had. Thank you.
Other council members? Ms. Berry.
Mr. Mayor, one of the things I'd like to know is whether we can put some of these questions in writing, because there was so much data that came at us that I'd rather be able to communicate with the schools and write down my questions as well, because this is gonna be sort of shotgun. I've got specific questions, and then I've got sort of larger comments.
Yeah, and just on the process point, I think as far as questions that are related to the school budgets, I think that the preferred way to handle that, per what the schools had asked for in previous years and the chair's here, she preferred to do it a different way, is to try to get those questions down in writing so they can get answered. And then certainly, as questions come up in our joint sessions, we can take them up as well. So preferred is writing. That way, they're public, et cetera, and the schools can get us questions. And again, they will all be public, and we'll certainly share those during the public hearings as well. And then also, any questions that come up during the courses of our discussions, again, those will also be heard and hopefully addressed. And then again, council members, I know that this is a lot of information to take in, but we're gonna have numerous sessions to go over this in much more detail. And as we've tried to do in years past, is really, rather than diving into the line-by-line, talk about some of the major drivers. So Mr. Shields and I, in the next week or two, are gonna get together to try to set up dates when we're gonna take up those major issues coming up on our work sessions dealing with the budget. So there'll be ample time to do that. So I hope council members aren't feeling this evening that they need to fully grasp what's been presented. But again, this is just intended to be an overview. There's a lot for us to think through, talk to the community. This is really just the beginning of what I anticipate is gonna be a very long and difficult process in the budget.
Okay.
Ms. Berry.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so the specific questions, and I will just highlight, I will put them in writing, but my questions will be, the school budget does or does not include debt service? There was a figure of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for affordable housing. I was, that came as a surprise to me in the general services budget. The school resource officer, eighty thousand, is that in the general budget or is that in the school budget if it's a school resource officer? I'm confused about that. The question I had asked about, I was going to ask about salary increases, was answered by Ms. Carney. I'm going to ask the schools about what percentage of children require food assistance in our school system. I was, as Mr. Snyder was, surprised to see schools charging parks and rec as a revenue driver. I wonder if parks and recs are now going to charge schools for the use of the football field or whatever the shared property is. That would not be a situation we wanna get into. But those questions I will answer specifically. But I guess overall, and I thank Mr. Snyder for taking the lead on this, when I ran for office, one of the platforms I ran on was the whole idea of multi-year budgeting. And although people argue that sometimes there's a lack of precision in the out-years about multi-year budgeting, what it does is, in a perfect world, it keeps this city or it keeps any jurisdiction from lurching from fiscal year to fiscal year, and especially with the tax rate. It keeps, it puts the tax rate, in a perfect world, in a context so that we don't go six cents one year, fifteen cents the next year, two cents the next year. It gives everybody an idea about where we're trying to go and why we're trying to get there. So while I agree with Mr. Snyder that these are shocking numbers, I take a different view. I think in some respects, the schools have done us a service by putting right out in front of everybody the fact that if we are serious about being sustainable, meeting the school needs, meeting city needs, we are going to be looking at double-digit tax increases over the next several years. So let's have that conversation. Let's put it right out there, because pretending that we're going to meet critical city services but not raise taxes, but deal with the very real problem of rising school enrollment, we're kidding ourselves. So if we could, as a group, come together like people who really want to solve a problem instead of factions within the city at each other's throats, it would be a great idea if we could take this, these rather shocking numbers and have, as Mr. Snyder talks about, a town hall meeting, but a town hall meeting that says, "Look, City of Falls Church, because I can tell you this, and I'm not looking at a crystal ball, we're gonna be at a buck fifty in two years. We're gonna be at a buck ninety by 2017. If I'm wrong, come to my house and we'll have sponge cake and sherry if I'm wrong about this." But I don't think I am, because I think we do have some real drivers. So again, I'd like to sort of, in a broad sense, echo in some respects what Mr. Snyder says, but I don't think we're gonna come to this magic number. I don't think at the end of all these conversations, we're gonna say, "And, ladies and gentlemen, you know, we're gonna raise taxes by four cents," because we can't. It's just not possible to have these levers move the way they move. So I guess that's, I will confine myself to these specific comments, but I will ask, I'm holding up this as a visual aid, although you can't read it. But I- I'm holding up, this is a visual aid, although you can't read it, but I am going to ask that really as a community, seriously, let's come together and see if we can, you know, again, like people who like each other, see if we can actually, you know, come to some decisions that put us on a path to sustainability. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Berry. Other council members? Mr. Callan?
That is sanguine, Ms. Berry, about just coming together. Sounds like a great idea.
Kumbaya.
Yeah, but I can't see the numbers the way you do. I mean, I do about the projection, but I'm not as sanguine that this is so easy. I have, I am going to set a couple of markers, and I'm going to ask one or two in-the-weeds questions, and that's the way it is. On the accounting regulations in the private sector, if you know that debt will be repudiated, the year you get that repudiation, and that's the technical word for non-payment, the debtor says they're not going to pay, it comes off of the books at that year. Are government accounting standards different, so you could take them one year at a time? Now, the reason for that is that they want to know, investors want to know what your actual position is, so you can't take debt off one year at a time if it's not going to be repaid. I just want to know how it's, how it is reported on the financials. I'll go to some other questions and then you can get back to that. The $900,000 that was a dividend, who got the dividend, Wyatt? That's all off of the city side, so that could have been, part of that could have been for unmet needs. So, you took $900,000 off of the dividend and then created a wish list that's greater than $900,000. So, how is it that this was a dividend? Why wasn't it $450,000 and then the other $450,000 could be for something else? That is real money, that's over a cent on the tax rate. Also, on the, I was surprised to see, now, unless the Affordable Housing Fund money was grant money, we were told that there would be no fiscal impact, that no additional revenue sources were going to be provided. I thought we just were about to approve that, so I have no idea where that came from and if...
Is that the 380?
The 380, the one that Johanna just mentioned. So, I don't understand how that was arrived at. As far as the, you know, the compensation, now, you can't separate the compensation and the ARC from the debt service and the overall financial situation of the city. We already know that if a city has an outsized debt ratio, the rating agency is relative to its fund balance, and 17% is fine, no, it's not fine, it's low to start with. You're going to have $100 million debt on top of that. With that type of exposure, we're going to run the real risk of getting downgraded, because we're going to have an unfunded liability that's substantial and a large debt, and the rating agencies have already said they're going to be looking more closely. And some cities and municipalities have already been downgraded. Manassas Park, I think, was downgraded five notches because of its outsized debt. So, they're not, they're not separate disembodied numbers, they all fit together, and I don't see that there's really much fitting together. And in terms of relying on economic growth, I mean, look, the Harris Teeter project, which is one of the highest yielding projects on the table, is estimated to produce indirect revenues, net fiscal revenues of about 1.2, 1.3 million. You look at the debt numbers going out, it is, we're going to have to tend Harris Teeter projects here if that's what we're looking for to cover the debt service for $100 million. That's too much to ask, that is not going to happen, and I don't know how we're going to get together, because this isn't a question of defying the laws of gravity. The situation, and I know people in public service and politicians in particular like to smooth it out a little bit and so forth, but the situation is cannot square. And I don't know why, I think I do agree with Johanna, but people have to understand, these numbers are not squaring, and there's no amount of economic, you cannot lean on the business community to somehow is going to generate that type of development that's going to pay for these expenditures going forward. As to the schools thing, I don't have any questions right now. There was a lot of information, and I may not have any questions in the future, I don't know. Depends on how it goes. But this is a much, I think, Mr. Snyder's comment saying it's sort of, I forget what your words were, Dave, out of line or, I mean, that's as a charitable comment as I can imagine. Having said something nice, I'm going to have to say, we're going to, we still may have to disagree, agree to disagree on the impact of mixed use in the apartments on school enrollment. I just don't think that's the driver, but we'll have to discuss that at another period. But absolutely need to confront these issues and where are we going to go at this stage? No way I see we can fund five years, $100 million in additional debt, period. No way to do it.
Other council members? Ron?
I've been doing this for a lot of years, I think by my count, 16 or 17 years, serving on bodies like this, and it always starts this way. And what surprised me when I moved to Falls Church was how easy the budget process was, because we sure had a lot of money compared to other places that we actually didn't have to make some of these hard decisions in my experience. You know, we're kind of back in the reality of where the rest of the world is, so I'm not that shocked by what I see here. And in fact, this is kind of where you end up, and I think anybody five or six years ago could have seen this is where you're headed with all the cuts that were being made and things that were being put off and things that were being deferred. Is it Nader who usually says, "Kick the can down the road?" And sometimes you catch up with it, you can't just keep kicking it. I think one of the operative words I hear all the time nowadays when I hear politicians or anyone talk is, "We'll agree to disagree." And you're probably going to see a lot of agreeing to disagree, which is a polite way of saying, "I totally disagree with you," and in some cases, "Don't believe the same facts," and we're going to see some of that as well. This is just the start. As Ms., as Nader said, there are going to be a lot of meetings and a lot to digest, and I'm not sure where we're going to end up. One thing I can guarantee is, as we go along the process and people stake out different positions, you're going to see people show up who feel their priorities are being threatened and things aren't going to be funded. And the one thing I want to, I hope we don't head down that path, is bouncing back and forth based on who shows up and says, "No, no, don't cut this, fund this, don't cut this, fund this," and we step back and make some rational decisions. But at the end of the day, it comes down to priorities, and each council member is going to have to weigh in on where you put your priorities. It's very easy for everybody to say, "I want lower taxes, I want to fund the schools adequately, I want to reward the city employees, I want to do everything." And at the end of the day, if there's not enough to go around, it's purely a matter of where we prioritize and what your own personal definition of adequate is. And I suspect by the time we get done, we're going to have a lot of disagreement on that, and it's going to come down to what four people agree on if we can't all agree on it. So, stay tuned and we'll see where it ends up.
Other council members? Mr. Tarter?
All I would say is I'm in listening mode, and obviously, there's a lot of hard work that needs to be done, and this is just the start, but I'm just trying to absorb all of this and try to, you know, get as much information as I can, but that's it.
Mr. Duncan, anything for me?
Just, I'll heed your admonition, but just one rifle shot on the Falls Church Cable TV, since I'm the liaison to that group, I will be attending their board meeting on Wednesday. It would be helpful if we could get some information about the questions that Mr. Snyder raised prior to that meeting. My only broad observation is that this seems like a time of very high expectations with still fairly modest resources. I'm struck just looking at the 60,000-foot view that, you know, we want to recapture the ground that we have given up on schools, you know, we've kept things pretty flat, we want to do a lot of that right now, we want a stormwater utility fund right now, you know, we want to do some infrastructure work with City Hall right now, and in various other categories. We're in a pretty expansive mindset, but our resources are still fairly modest. Some of the things Mr. Snyder said about individual taxpayers, certainly what we all hear, the city's resources, you know, we're just at the beginning of what I hope will be a campaign of economic development that we'll bring. I don't know if we'll get 10 Harris Teeters, but I would hope that we could get ourselves on a course to produce, you know, $1 or $2 million in new revenue every year, because I think it's correct that if we don't do that, councils years from now will be starting out this process where we started out tonight. But I am optimistic, I think, five years from now, whoever's sitting in these chairs is going to look back on a time when we did meet these challenges, because that's what Falls Church does. You know, we take these challenges on and we meet them. It'll be some combination of belt tightening, it'll be some economic development, I hope, and it'll be some taxation. I would just hope that we could all start out this process not staking out unchangeable positions, and I'm certainly open to listening and dialogue, and I hope the schools, I know the schools will be too, and I know my colleagues on council will be also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. All right, I have some questions, and then I'm going to provide some general comments. Mr. Shields, if you can provide, as we begin the discussions, some data about what's happening in the region as far as salaries and salary increases? Know that we're looking at doing a compensation review, and given how various jurisdictions categorize various positions, it's very hard to compare positions across jurisdictions, but if you can give us a sense of what we're seeing regionally on salary, I'd like to get that information. I'm sure my council members would like to get that information as we have those discussions about salaries and how we're comparing. Then as far as the school transfer requests, you referred to that there's two cents that are essentially orphaned right now. If we were to adopt those, looking at the charts, it looks like the school transfer increase, not including those items, is at 12.9%. Is that right? What if we include those items that were there, which would be the QSCABs, the other community service items? So, the two cents, what would that take the increase to? I just want to make sure that we're getting the true cost of the request. Shields, do you have those numbers or?
I don't have it. We could probably do the math pretty quickly, but it's, I think it's about, about 15%? We'll need to run those numbers. I think it's a total of about $720,000, so add that to it. We need to do that math.
If we can get that math done, I went to law school since I can't do math, as the saying goes. In the way that I'm understanding with what you've presented, once you take out the inter-jurisdictional contracts, that the true growth of city services, et cetera, is at 2%?
That's correct.
So, basically, a percent, 1.8% gets swallowed up based on the guidance we gave you by the inter-jurisdictional agreements.
Correct.
So, this goes to a point that I think that Mr. Kalin was trying to raise when he took umbrage with my statement that this is treading water.
It's going backwards.
This is clearly going backwards, because the city's not even staying in line with economic growth at this point. We are literally going backwards, because growth is at 3.8%, but yet, you're proposing 2%. And understanding that the reason why we're seeing such dramatic numbers as far as the budget goes is, you know, we've got some choices about stormwater and what happens there, and I'll get to that in a minute, but it's the school growth issues and the school budget increase numbers. So, now I'm diving a little bit outside of just questions, but our instructions to the manager was bringing in a budget that's within the scope of what we're seeing happening as far as growth. Not the entire budget is set forth that way. So, I think that's why we're seeing the delta. It's going to be a huge issue for us to tackle. I don't think the type of tax increases at 14 cents are sustainable over the long run, so I want to just echo Mr. Snyder, Ms. Berry, and Mr. Kalin's point on that. And to Ms. Berry's point about out-years, I think part of the budget guidance was also getting the analysis of the outer years and the gap analysis, just so we can see the trending. And certainly, I think when we looked at the trending last go-around, there was huge spikes, but this is, this blows the door on anything we'd seen before, because I don't think we had been anticipating this level of increase in one year. So, we really need to see that analysis again, using what's the proposed number, to see what that does to the trend lines. And I think it gets to the point of, you know, I'll say it now, certainly happy to have these discussions, but it's, just, I don't see how it's sustainable. And as others have mentioned, we're not going to be able to build our way out of this either. So, we're going to have to have some serious discussions as a community about how do we handle some of these gaps. Certainly, development, economic growth is going to be part of that, but also figuring out ways to live within our means is going to be another aspect of this. And, you know, I'll sort of put it out there, normally I don't like commenting on items, but I also don't want this lingering to be an issue, this notion about that we're going to get rid of the cable television, which is a clear way people learn about what's happening in the city. It's sort of a non-starter from my standpoint. You know, I sort of take a little bit of umbrage that it's even, we're having this discussion. It's part of what cities do, it's a great service. Lots of localities, larger, smaller than ours, do that. I'm sort of a wonka these things. When I go to another municipality, I oftentimes find myself somehow wandering into their public access channel and watching their school board meeting. I know it's a weird thing. It happened to me when I was in Hawaii on my honeymoon.
Oh, no.
But, and it's, my wife was watching them too.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if I might, I'm Phil Duncan, and I have a cable TV problem too.
So, I just hope that we can take that, we can all shortly agree that transparency is important, and we're committed to doing that. And I think it certainly benefits the schools as well, so.
I think if I could ask any questions originally. County question?
Mr. Kalin, can you use your mic?
The accounting question?
The gas question about...
You don't know? Okay. And the reason, well, one small question for Susan. The step increase, is it 3% less the 1%? So, it's a real increase of 2%? Or is it 4% less the 1% real increase of around 3%?
The step increase is about 3%, okay? 1% is not part of that. Part of...
Oh, so we have to add a percent to that to cover the cost of the increase in the...
The IRS, right.
Okay.
You know, simply require staff to pay 5% one year. So, that is stretched out, so you want to say last year was a...
I was under the impression that that was going to be absorbed within the 3%, but this is addition, so that will add, that will add to the pension costs considerably more.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kalin. And finally, two other points that I wanted to make. Mr. Shields, this is an ongoing request that I've had and council members have had, is if you can keep us abreast of what's happening on regional issues, given what we're seeing with some of the macroeconomic pictures. And finally, on the issue of stormwater, and I know that some council members just raised this, you know, this is, again, one of the issues where it's not an issue that people see every day, doesn't, isn't very visible, because most of the ground, most of the pipes are underground, most of the infrastructure is never seen, et cetera, except when it fails. That's when it affects our communities. And I'll say it again, as I've said for numerous years, this is a core local government issue. This is what we are here to do. Managing our stormwater, managing our streets is a core function, and as Mr. Pepe has said, we have kicked that can down the road every time, because it's expedient to do, nobody sees it, and then we wonder why we're getting flooding on water that it's the city's... on water that it's the city's responsibility to manage. So, again, I remain committed to addressing stormwater. I think it's a, it should have been a priority for a number of years, and it's not just about managing our flooding, it's also about managing our responsibilities under the new regulations that we're facing. And as I've mentioned before, I don't want Falls Church to be the city that gets its first fine through the system. And we are not the only community that's struggling with this. Other communities in the region are having to deal with it as well. That's a can I don't want to kick down the road. May not be the numbers that we're talking about, and we need to tailor it back, but we have to find a way of funding it. So, I'm still committed to doing this with an enterprise fund. So, those are sort of my two bright lines.
Okay.
All right? Anything else, council? Let's move on to the next item on the agenda. We are ready for the first item.
Council, the next item on the agenda, under resolutions and first readings of ordinances, TR-13-09, resolution to adopt FY-2013 funding recommendations for the arts and cultural grants, and Virginia Commission for the Arts, VCA Local Challenge Grant, submission.
Thank you very much, Kathy.
And Ginny Paxton will provide a staff report. The council discussed this at work sessions, so we will just provide a very brief overview for the benefit of the community and those who might be watching on television. Thank you, Ginny.
Council, it's a pleasure to address you again regarding the awarding of funding recommendations for the $20,000 of arts and cultural grants, and the $5,000 of VCA community grant funds. As presented in last week's work session, staff is requesting the approval of TR-1309, which adopts the recommendations of the Little City Catch Foundation's allocation of this $25,000 to 11 arts and cultural organizations. More detailed background was given at the work session, but for the record, the Little City Catch Foundation, or TLCCF, as you'll see it most commonly referred to, serves as the fiscal agent for not only watch night, but also administers and awards this grant money. Attachment B lists the organizations and the projects that received the funding, but 11 proposals were submitted, and all the proposals were recommended for funding. The $20,000 was all appropriated in the FY-13 budget, and the $5,000 is a VCA community grant funds, so there's no new fiscal impact. We will also be collecting feedback from all grant awardees, as was suggested at the work session. We're available and happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thanks, Jenny. Council, any questions before we open this up for a motion? If I can get a motion on this item, please.
Mayor, I move TR-13-09.
You moved to adopt.
Sorry, I moved to adopt TR-13-09.
Thank you. If I can get a second?
Second.
Mr. Kalin on the second. I want to open this up for public comment. I have one speaker slip, Mr. Barry Bushow.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Barry Bushow, 903 Madison Lane, here tonight representing the legal woman voters. You might recall, a year ago, we provided you with a legal position on the arts and the value arts provide to our community. And so here tonight, we want to also recommend that your passage of the TR-1309, the Catch Foundation money and challenge that you so generously budgeted in FY-13. To be succinct and to get my speech in under the limits, I'm going to read, so pardon my reading. In 2011, the League completed a comprehensive study of the arts with a focus on the state of the arts in Falls Church, their contribution to the city and the level of support shown by local governments and its citizens. The League found that the arts are far-reaching in their impacts, from measurable benefits such as improved student performance and economic growth, to intrinsic values such as development of community bonds, personal pleasures, and arts enriching our citizens and its people. The economic impact of arts is well-studied and locally realized. The economic multiplier effect of arts is an estimate of the number of dollars changing hands within the community, econometrics, if you will. I.e., theater pays its actor, the actor spends money at the grocery, the grocery pays cashier, and so on, and so on. Anytime money changes hands, there's a measurable economic impact. What makes the economic impact of arts and cultural organizations unique is that they induce large amounts of related spending by their audiences. Locally in the city of Falls Church, Creative Cauldron and the Falls Church Arts have documented the synergy of arts and local businesses, its ongoing impact, the repeat business that occurs because of the art space at Pearson Square. Patrons attend to performance, art shows, and openings, classes. They eat at Pizarros, Orso's, they become repeat customers. Parents pick up their kids from Fairfax County and take them to all the art camps, decide to eat at Elevation Burgers, on and on about how the money keeps generating and expanding our economy in the city of Falls Church. Patrons ask for recommendations of good hair salons to get their hair done while waiting for their children to finish an art class. Production members who live in Maryland and district pick a different city restaurant each time they have a break and rehearsals. The list goes on. The Arts and Economic Prosperity Study developed by the Americans for the Arts shows for every dollar invested by the government in the arts, $7 will return to the community. As the arts flourish, so will creativity, innovation, the fuel that drives our economy. The Catch Foundation grants are a welcome and much-needed component in the Falls Church's efforts to support our growing arts community. Thanks to our local supporters of the arts culture, Falls Church Arts, Creative Cauldron, Tanner Hill Foundation, Village Society, Vipas, Friends at Cheer Hill Park, we all lend our voice to the creative talents of our community and bringing visibility to the city. These groups deserve support for their hard work, dedication, financial resources the members have advanced towards making the organizations successful and providing enrichments to our community. The grant program is critical in today's environment of shrinking dollars for the arts. As stated in the city resolution, examining creation of arts and culture district, a community draws strength and identity from knowledge of its history and the accomplishment of its forbears, and is enriched by the creative and intellectual talents of its citizens. The Catch program makes possible the continuation of that legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bushow. Those are all the speaker slips that I have on this item. Are there any members of the public that wish to address this item? And we had received public comment on this before as well. Ms. Bushow, did we have anything in writing that you haven't read already? I'm going to go ahead and close this for public comment, open it up for any council member comments right now before we take a vote. Ms. Bushow, if you'd call the roll, please.
On TR-13-09, Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tartar?
Yes.
Mayor Bruck?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Council, the next on and before you is TR-13-05, resolution to adopt three vice cooperative agreement between the city of Falls Church and the Falls Church Housing Corporation.
Ms. Vincent? Thank you.
The staff would like to recommend a revision to the current cooperative agreement with the Falls Church Housing Corporation. We have met at two work sessions and have discussed the agreement, and I'm here with Jim Garrett, who's the executive director of the Falls Church Housing Corporation, to answer any further questions that you all may have.
Thank you very much. Does any member of council have any questions? Yes, council member Berry?
Yes, I just, again, to refer back to the question that showed up in the budget, I was just confused about the $380,000 unmet need in affordable housing initiative. What is that?
That's unrelated to this housing corporation cooperative agreement. That is an unmet need for the Affordable Housing Fund.
Ah, okay. That's, that's the fund that was, that we had discretion over the last time and provided folks first-time house buying.
Correct.
That's correct.
Correct. That came out of that fund. And that was, when the Affordable Housing Policy was adopted, there was a mention in the policy that there would be a dedicated source of revenue to fund the policy, and so that came out of that, which is, again, the agreement that we're talking about here is a cooperative agreement between the city and the Falls Church Housing Corporation. And there is no funding associated with this agreement at all.
Thank you. Council member Kalin?
Now, this, is this the Affordable Housing Trust? Is that different from the Affordable Housing Fund?
This is a...
Because, let me spare you the agony of where I'm headed on this. When the first effort was to provide a $2 million grant alone, the first three years of debt service was going to be taken out of the Affordable Housing Fund, I think, and that was funded through developer contributions. It was like $500,000 had been sitting there. So if that was provided by the developer, and this is, we're talking about the same fund, why would we replenish that which was provided by the developers instead of affordable housing units? I don't understand the logic of that.
And I guess I would just say, we're here prepared to talk about the, an update to the agreement with the Housing Corporation, which has nothing to do with those funding questions.
Okay.
You know, we're going to talk about those when we talk about the human services budget, but where that unmet need comes from is, with the discussion of the housing policy, there was a discussion about considering possibly dedicated funding for the Affordable Housing Fund, and that was...
That's a cent.
Right, but the cent came out, but the language that stayed in was that the council should consider, in its budget, annual dedicated support for affordable housing. So, I've highlighted it as an unmet need, it's not in the budget.
Right.
But we will talk about, you know, in terms of the spectrum of human services needs, that's one that's out there.
You could have waited at least a year before you tried to cash the check.
I think there was council members who wanted to have that discussion about the cent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So...
Okay, I'm good.
For a motion? We've thrashed this out in work sessions so many times.
Oh, I have a feeling we're going to be thrashing it out also during that.
No, 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 I'm just talking about this agreement. No, this other one, I'm sure, we'll thrash out until we're all...
I was planning on actually putting it on a budget work session, just dedicated to affordable housing.
I've expected to see a full-blown discussion of that one cent.
All right, if I can get a motion, please.
I moved to adopt, Mr. Mayor. I moved to adopt TR-13-05.
Thank you. Any public comments on this? Not seeing any. Ms. Bushow, did we receive any written comments on this item?
No, sir, Mr. ...
I'm going to go ahead and close this item for public comment. Council members, any discussion about this before we take a vote? If I can have the roll call, please.
On TR-13-05, Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Oh, come on.
Okay.
I assume that's a yes, then. Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tartar?
Mayor Bruck? Yes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
All right, we are on to council member comments. Council members, any comments this evening?
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
Mr. Duncan?
Question. The appointments committee, did I see a note that said that the meeting is at 5:15?
5:15.
Okay. And it will run until-ish?
5:45.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I have a conflict, so...
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
But the meeting will go on without me?
The meeting will go on without you?
My only other thought was to say that on Sunday, I went out to Vienna and took a little tour of the fresh market, and if you have not been there, I would encourage you to go there and just see what they're all about. It was an impressive store, I thought, and something that would be a nice addition to Falls Church, so take a field trip.
Great, thank you, Mr. ... Other council members? Ron?
I attended a meeting, and Mr. Snyder had some business, and I've been in another meeting the night before, so I attended meetings with the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority, if I correct that, not to be confused with the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission, which is an actual body created to administer and oversee how money is spent on road improvements. And of course, as a lot of people have read in the paper, Virginia came together and got some national attention for a compromise that was reached on road funding and some taxes, whether it holds up in court will be another issue, but assuming it does hold up in court, it has some pluses and minuses. When people actually sorted through the legislation that was passed, there were some technical details that raised some issues for Northern Virginia. So at this meeting, they were debated for several hours, and a letter was drafted to go to the governor with some suggestions to improve some things that may not even have been thought about. For example, the legislation includes a provision that if any of the money that is raised through this mechanism is not spent on transportation, all the money goes away. And someone pointed out, well, that means one jurisdiction could vote not to spend the money properly, and the entire region loses all their money. So that's one of the technical fixes they're looking. What actually is going to happen is there's been a request for the governor to request amendments to the legislation, and so stay tuned. I don't want to get into the technicalities. It's kind of interesting to see how this legislation actually affects Falls Church, because on one hand, it's money for the region, on the other hand, it puts some heavy burdens, and since we had a tax discussion tonight, for example, part of it is that localities have to put in a certain amount to get a certain amount back, in a certain kind of tax that we don't have here. Now, the other big counties all around all have that kind of tax and didn't seem to have a problem with this, so while we raised Falls Church's concerns, that was not included in the letter that went to the governor, though our concern was noted, and we were joined by the city of Manassas, sharing the same concerns. If you want to have anything else, I mean, you've been working on this issue as well.
No, I'd just like to thank council member Pepe for being there and the staff work on it. It's a very complex piece of legislation, and we're still trying to figure out what it really means. A big chunk of it would require us to put on an additional tax on our commercial sector to get some back, and it's not entirely clear whether we even benefit at that. So, we've been very, very cautious in our reaction to this legislation, and I think we should continue to do that. But thank you very much for attending, that council member, Pepe. A couple other points. I was approached by a member of the Arlington County Board, the Community Development Program Citizens Advisory Committee needs another Falls Church representative, so I'll turn this over to the clerk for further work on that. In terms of additional information, I'm really interested in what other jurisdictions' budget information, in terms of what other jurisdictions are doing, what they're seeing with their school costs, what they're seeing with their school enrollments, what they're seeing with commercial activity, to get a more of a regional context, and also other jurisdictions, not only the larger ones, but also the ones that are more our size. What sorts of things are they seeing, and where are there some things we could be doing differently? So, look forward to working with everybody on the budget issues. That's all I have. Oh, one other thing, we're going to be scheduling soon the formal dedication of new three Civil War Trail signs that really celebrate key parts of our history, and so I think more information will be coming out about that. And then I think the League of, as I mentioned earlier, there's, I think we've set on a date for a town hall that the League of Women Voters is sponsoring. I would ask the city clerk, I think it's March...
20th.
20th, the day we don't have a work session, as if we were looking for something to do that particular day. So, in any event, thank you very much.
Ms. Bushow, we can also just notice that, I'm sure council members are going to be interested in attending. Thank you, Ms. Bushow. Counsel, I think I have a conflict that night. I'm going to try to get there, but I'll be a bit late, and I may not be able to make it at all.
20th.
Yeah.
And we've got something this Thursday as a work session.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
That's just a gathering, right? It's not like an official meeting?
No.
Okay, because I might not be able to make it either.
It's a forum.
Okay.
Ms. Berry?
Although not immediately Falls Church-related, I just wanted to remind everybody that we're coming to the close of the Washington DC Environmental Film Festival. For those who have not had an opportunity to attend these film festivals in the past, they show films of a wide range of environmental interests, and of course, are made environmentally friendly by being accessible by Metro. In the spirit of total disclosure, this Wednesday is featuring Lonesome George and the Battle for Galapagos.
[laughing]
And yours truly will be on the panel to discuss any issue that anybody has, any questions that anybody has about Lonesome George. And Dave, I'm sure you're going to be front and center.
Where is Lonesome George now?
Do you know where he is right now? He is in the freezer in the Wyatt Hill Airport, getting on an airplane tonight at 11:00 to get to JFK tomorrow morning at 4:45, to go to the American Museum of Natural History to be taxidermied. But thank you for asking.
I'd always appreciate your questions.
Mr. Callan?
Hopefully, we will all be spared.
But I can arrange it for you, trust me. I know how to do that.
One issue that we skated by, Wyatt, was this issue of the $900,000. I would greatly appreciate, given we have the, why it was decided that it would come out of, the dividend would be paid out of the city side, and whether, is this under your authority, or, I mean, could have been done a different way? Why did you decide that way as opposed to, or why didn't you come back to us on that issue? You don't have to tell me now, but later on, I'd appreciate an explanation of that consideration. And I also, for all of those council members that feel, you know, we're just, we've seen it before, and we can handle this, and we can work it out if we just play nice together, I would appreciate concrete proposals, something that actually moves us forward and not just commentary based on previous experiences. So I'm looking forward to hearing and seeing specific proposals to make this budget work. Thank you.
Other council members? Okay. And I didn't have anything. Before we go into closed session, there's a set of minutes. There were some corrections that I put in, which deals just with my disclosure. And again, since we touched on Harris Teeter, I'll make the same this evening. If I can get a motion to adopt the Monday, January 14, 2013, as amended with the edits that Ms. Bushow put into our packets.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the minutes of January 14, 2013, as amended.
Thank you. If I can get a second, please?
Second.
Is Mr. Duncan on the second? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There's two abstentions. That's Mr. Pepe and Mr. Snyder, and I take it that that's because you weren't there.
There.
If I can just let the public, well, let me check with the city attorney. Is there going to be a motion that's going to be requested when we come out?
Yes, there are.
Okay. So when we come out, we are still going to be conducting public business? So we're going to move into closed session. That would be my suggestion, and then we'll reconvene in open session for a vote potentially on a motion. Upon a motion made by council member...
Berry.
And seconded by council member...
Snyder.
The dream team.
The dream team when it comes to these motions, and passed by a voice vote of city council. Council went into closed session pursuant to 2.2-3711A7, consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, in consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, to wit, Idlewood Garden Associates LLP v Falls Church. Do I need to read the case numbers?
No.
Okay. Idlewood Village, Section 2 LP versus City of Falls Church, Providence Apartments LLC v Falls Church. Mayor Baruch, yes. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yeah.
Council Member Barry?
Yes.
Council Member Duncan?
Yes.
Council Member Callan?
Yes.
Council Member Pepe?
Yes.
Council Member Tartar? We're going into closed session at 9:50. Can we do this in the...
Is this a standing room?